Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday. Let me get my... Ah, there we go. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, December 6, 2022, meeting of the Denton County Commissioners Court. We're excited to have you all here. At this time, I'd like to welcome Dr. Matt Richardson, our Denton County Health Director, for our invocation and our pledges. We'll be led by our Director of Emergency Management, Eric Hutmacher. So if you'll please stand.
Good morning. Let's bow. Our Father, we thank you for such a glorious morning. We thank you for the gift, and that's what it is, the gift of the present, this present day. Father, we thank you that we are here and that we can contribute, that we can serve. Father, we just are grateful for opportunity, and we're so thankful and we have such gratitude that you have blessed us in this way, that you've put us in these places that we can serve, Father. We thank you for that. Father, we come this morning with so many requests, and God is the Creator. We bring those to you as you've instructed us to do. We don't do that out of selfishness, but Father, we do it because our hearts yearn for healing. We yearn for the mercy that you can grant and the peace that you can grant. Father, this morning, we ask that you be with those who are suffering and sick. God, I know, my family knows so many who are ill. I know there are so many of us, especially this time of year where we do hear about people who are struggling, and so, Father, we just ask you be with them. God, we ask for that healing hand that you talk about. And, Father, we ask this morning for a measure of strength and wisdom through the holidays. God, we know that there's so much to be done, and it feels like the clock ticks, Father, and so we just ask for patience, and we ask for the strength and the wisdom to reflect kindness and compassion. God, we know that's what your son exemplled for us, and we just ask for an extra measure of strength to reflect that, to take his example and to show others what it means to be compassionate, what it means to be peaceful, what it means to be merciful. Father, we ask for those things this morning, and we thank you for the opportunity to live in your light, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in our pledge of allegiance to our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Eric. Cheryl, we don't have anyone registered for public comments. Okay, perfect. We'll proceed past that. Members, let's go to item two. Are consigned agenda members, are there any items you'd like to pull? We have a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Marchant. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consignment today consists of item 2A, approval of payroll. Item 2B, approval of order-making appointments. Item 2C is approval of interdepartmental transfers. Next, let's go to item 5A, approval of bill report, payments from CSUD, Community Corrections. TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT, Interest and DA, forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. Bear with me, I have a lot today. I have one to Mustang SUD for $3,1978, have two to Verizon for $5,644.96, four to US Bank Voyager totaling $20,992.88, have four of them to AT&amp;T for $14,312.70, one to City of Denton for $148.32, one to Republic Services for $2,044.28, and one to Bolivar Water for $178.19, and the last one's to Atmos Energy for $298.68.
Perfect. Thank you. We have a motion to adopt the amended bill report this morning. We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6A, approval of purchase of a Gimmel software update from Karasoff Technology Corporation, amount of $54,784.80 for the Texas Department of Information Resources, DIR Cooperative Contract, DIR, TSO 4288, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Marchant. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6B, approval of specifications and authority to advertise for ITB number 22-2713, Denton County Courts Building, the HVAC renovation.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6C, approval of amendment for RFP 02142235E Clinical Works LLC Software License and Support Agreement for Electronic Medical Records and Practice Management to Add a Provider, and any appropriate action. We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 7A, approval, pardon me, approval of Budget Amendment Request 100370 to increase revenue and allocate expenditures for the Disease Intervention Specialist Grant for Salary Assistance Benefits in the amount of $137,798 for the period of October to December in fiscal year 2023, and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next is item 8A, Report from Human Resources Regarding Hiring Actions of Elected Officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have four new hires in the District Clerk, three new hires in UNA Approvation, two new hires in the Sheriff's Office, and three promotions in the Sheriff's Office. That's it for today.
Perfect. Thank you. This is presented for recording purposes only. Next is item 9A, this is approval of contract 5371801300001, Amendment Number Seven between the Texas Department of State Health Services and Denton County, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 9B, approval of a contract 5371801430001, Amendment Number Seven between Texas Department of State Health Services and Denton County. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 9C, approval of Business Associate Agreement between Denton County, the Covered Entity, and Fast Fix LLC Business Associate for the Provision of Telemedicine Services for Behavioral Health, Health and Other Social Services as needed for the Denton County Jail Health Correctional Health, and any appropriate action.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion?
All right, look.
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you a question.
Please.
Just for the sake of discussion or lack of knowledge on it, these type of contracts, are they not covered under our current contract with MHMR?
I don't know the answer to that, Ron. Let's see what Matt can address that.
You know what I'm talking about, don't you?
I think this is an online telemedicine thing, but I don't know if that's...
Yeah.
It is. So we actually have a contracted psychiatrist at the jail that is outside of MHMR. MHMR does not provide us a contract psychiatrist, and so this contract is a telemedicine psychiatry service. So we actually have a contracted psychiatrist, of which we use for two clinics a week, and then in his absence, we're needing more and more psychiatry services. And those services, we're going to a telemedicine just for ease and effectiveness. Also psychiatry is expensive, and so this is the fastest, most effective way to get those services to the jail, in addition to the ones we've already had for many years. We're kind of expanding the portfolio of psychiatry access.
Okay, but by no means is it replacing any contractual requirement that we currently have with MHMR.
This is only augmenting it. It's my understanding they're not in position to provide those services regardless.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Great question. Do we have a motion? In a second. Any other questions?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 12A, approval of the 2022-2027 Interlocal Agreement for the Use of the Denton County Radio Communication Systems with the city of Louisville. Jody, can you explain what this agreement entails? Do you mind?
Eric's counting up. Yes, the city of Louisville and Denton County for several years have had a contract in place where they are a part of the county radio system, but they operate kind of a individualized system with their own cells within the city of Louisville. So to allow them to utilize our court and our infrastructure to support their radio system, this is just a continuation of that contract that's been ongoing for years.
Perfect. Good. All right. Do we have a motion for approval?
So...
Motion by Commissioner Marchant, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 12B, approval of Memorandum of Understanding between Denton County Sheriff's Office and GBGC LLC DBA Gulf Coast Gunbusters, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 13A, we'll hold that till after executive session. Let's go to item 13B, Approval of United Way of Denton County Incorporated Funding Request to Fulfill Allocation American Rescue Plan for Housing Assistance, Nonprofit Assistance, and Food Assistance Due to COVID-19, and any appropriate action.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Marchant. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. We will do 13C after executive session. We'll do 13D after executive session. All right. And then, let me see here. Well, at this time, I would like to, us to go to the agenda, to item 3A. 3A is the approval of a proclamation recognizing Senator Jane Nelson for her 30 years of dedicated service to the Texas Senate, and any appropriate action. And Senator Nelson, we are glad to see you this morning. If you'll please come up here, good Senator, so we can see your smiling face. We promise we'll let you have the last word.
Oh, good.
Well, it's great to see you this morning.
Good to be here.
And it's a great honor to have you here with us, and it was an honor to have you serve and represent Denton County all these years. So I'll go ahead and read this proclamation. It's a proclamation honoring Texas State Senator Jane Nelson, and whereas the Denton County Commissioners Court is pleased to recognize Senator Jane Nelson on her 30 years of dedicated service to the Texas Senate. And whereas Senator Nelson is a businesswoman and former teacher who was elected to the Texas Senate in 1992 after serving two terms on the State Board of Education, and is the first woman to represent Denton County in the Senate. And whereas Senator Nelson is the longest-serving Chair of the Senate Health and Human Services Committee, and is the first woman to chair the powerful Senate Finance Committee and wrote the last four state budgets, all of which were balanced and grew less than population times inflation. Whereas as a strong advocate for transportation, Senator Nelson sponsored legislation in 2001 that created the framework for the Denton County Transportation Authority, our DCTA, and in subsequent legislative sessions passed legislation to ensure DCTA had the statutory authority needed to develop safe, innovative, and efficient transportation options for our growing county. And whereas in 2019, in response to the tragic incident involving the loss of two young lives, Senator Nelson was instrumental in Denton County's effort to improve public safety by sponsoring legislation to authorize the Commissioners Court to install streetlights along county roads in unincorporated areas of the county. And whereas Senator Nelson has worked tirelessly to truly impact the lives of others and passed several bills to support the nonprofit organizations throughout Denton County, she has been a champion for abused and neglected children, victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking, as well as ensuring our veterans and their families have access to mental health services and treatment through local programs. And whereas Denton County is especially grateful to Senator Nelson for her leadership during COVID-19 to ensure local leaders had the resources and support needed to fight the pandemic. Now therefore be resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court congratulates Senator Jane Nelson on her exemplary service to Denton County and the state of Texas, and we wish her well in all future endeavors done in open court this the sixth day of December 2022 upon a motion made by the Chair, seconded by everybody. I think Commissioner Mitchell got that one, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. Well, thank you, Senator, for being here. Thank you for your service, and I know that each of the members here wants to say little things, and I'll go next to last. I'll let you have the last word. Go ahead, Senator. Go ahead, Commissioner Williams.
Senator, thank you for dedicating 30 years of your life to the citizens of Texas. Obviously, you can listen to all the wonderful things that you've been able to accomplish in those 30 years. Not everybody in your position takes the opportunity given to them to make such changes that are huge for individuals within the state. And, you know, everybody here will have a thousand things to say, so I'll try to keep it short. And I also want to thank your family, because, you know, when we run, they run with us whether they want to or not, and you give up a lot.
True.
You give up a lot of time with your family, your kids, and so the selfish part of us, it disappears because we actually are working for the people. And so I want to say thank you to them as well, and I wish you the best and enjoy the rest of your life without having to worry about somebody wearing you out every few minutes.
That's right.
It won't stop. People are going to call you anyway, but it is what it is, so...
I have to be a cleaner.
Yeah. But I do want to thank you.
They're right there.
No, but I want to thank you. And I wish you the absolute best. Thank you. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Senator, I am especially grateful to you and your service.
Thank you.
And your friendship.
Thank you.
Friendship above all. Your career mirrors my career. You started in 1988. I was a councilman in 87. You took office in 93. I took office as a JP in 93. So I'm getting ready to retire too, after 30 years. And so we've been on the same trail. I can remember, the earliest I can remember was helping Mo... I was going to say Mo Boy.
Like last week.
Yeah, last week.
Can you remember past that?
Helping Jeff Mosley run for county judge, and it's a monster thunderstorm in the middle of the night, and we're out on a roadway putting up a four-by-six sign on a barbed wire fence across from your homestead. That's where I found out about the Nelson family, if you know what I'm talking about. Mosley told me all about that, and I know Mosley's a very sincere friend of yours, but I'm going to highlight, if I could, some of the things that you have achieved during the time, which are remarkable. The women of Denton County are empowered by you and have been empowered by you. Look, I mean, we have most, probably one day, all of them will be women up here.
They had four at one time.
Four at one time, including Mary Horn, Sandy Jacobs, and Cynthia...
Floyd.
Whoa.
Lee Walker. Lee Walker.
And Lee Walker.
Yes.
So, you know, so you've empowered a lot of women to get into this business, if you would, but you have sharp elbows. You have a sharp tongue, and I mean that in a positive way.
I'll take that.
And you've got a lot of things done. I mean, you were on the State Board of Education in 88 through 92. You're the highest-ranking woman, Republican woman, in the Texas Senate as you go out. I mean, talk about going out on a high note. And you're the 10th woman ever elected to the Texas Senate. The 10th woman ever elected to the Texas Senate, and you... And you are the longest-serving Chair of the Senate Health and Human Services Committee in Texas history. And I cannot list the amount of things that you did as a Senator on that Health and Human Services Committee that had benefited the poor, had benefited the mental health, those that, the homeless. Those people owe a lot of stuff to you and your leadership. You can go to bed at night, and you can say, "It is well with my soul."
That's right.
"It is well with my soul." And God can say to you, "Well done, good and faithful servant," because that's who and what we are. A lot of people don't realize that. They think we're just politicians doing everything for ourselves, but we're not. We're good and faithful servants. And you have been a good and faithful servant for the constituents within Denton County and Tarrant County and all those that you represented. I love you. I wish you nothing but the best, and you're not done yet.
I'm not done yet.
Never not done yet. So thank you again for your friendship and your service.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Senator Nelson. I'm sorry. You've been with us a long time. Who is Jane Nelson? She's known for her tireless commitment to her constituents, her ability to get things done. She's a businesswoman, former teacher, proud mother, and what I like about it all, she's a proud grandmother. And she brings real-world experience to some of our most pressing issues. These are words that are talked about, about Jane Nelson. Mike Haley, of the publisher of Capital Insights, said, "She's definitely a superstar at the Capitol. She's definitely somebody you want to have on your side in a fight. If you don't, there's a good chance that you may lose." Jane, I just want to thank you for all your service to Denton County and to people, the constituents. All those 40 birthday parties that we've all attended. She's still 40. She's a little older than I am. I'm 39.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jane, we love you for all that you've done. You have been a superstar, a trailblazer for all of us women all over Texas, not just Denton County, but all over Texas and all over the world. Your consideration of people, plus you're a tax cutter, you're a budget worker, you make sure that the citizens of Denton County get the type of life that they deserve. I want to appreciate you. You've been a friend. I started my career in 1990, 32 years ago, and you were there. You've been a supporter for me, and I've been a supporter of yours from that time on. I just want to appreciate you for your knowledge, and you know what? You don't mind sitting down and having a conversation with people to explain things, how things go. You know, most people, when they go up and rise as high as you've risen, they don't have time for the little people. I like the fact that you still have time for the little people or the people that don't know you personally. We here in Denton County have been blessed to know you for all these years. We've been blessed to work alongside you and take direction or information, and you also have taken direction from us. And I want to thank you for all your service, all you've done. I know you, looking at the pictures of all those grandbabies that you get to play with, and I think you surpassed me. I've got nine. I think you.
Twelve.
Yeah. Yeah, she's got a dozen now. You're just a wonderful woman to look to. I thank you for all that you do. We don't ever hear any scandal about you either. You know, 30 years, no scandals. Thank you for being there, and as this guy said, "You better bring your best weapon to the fight, because you're going to fight for what you believe, and you're going to fight for your constituents." I admire that. I thank you. I appreciate your friendship, and we could go on and on and on about what everybody said. But I love you, appreciate you, and I know that you're not done, so have fun with those grandbabies, and if you want to send some this way, I'll take some. Thank you. Be blessed.
Good morning, Senator Nelson.
Good morning.
There's just, we go back a long way. One of the things I've appreciated the most about you is your solid pro-life vote every time it was needed. And Senator, you didn't just talk the talk, you walked the pro-life walk. We appreciate that so much. One of the things that hasn't been mentioned today that I am so excited and impressed with is the Jane Nelson Leadership Institute at Texas Williams University. That is such an amazing place. If any of you haven't been there, please go. It's an interactive way to let kids think about what they might like to do in public service. It's awesome. And I was so honored to be there when the ribbon cutting took place, Senator. Thank you for including me on that. Years and years ago, when you had just been elected to the State Board of Education, I was Program Chairman at the Republican Women's Club, and you were going to be our Speaker. I was so excited about that, and I was so nervous to introduce you. I have to tell you all, instead of my spray deodorant that morning, I sprayed hairspray.
It hailed it.
It hailed, yeah. And so I had to take another shower. I was. I haven't told a lot of people that.
Did you do that this morning?
That was not my problem this morning, Judge. It was traffic this morning. But then, when I got you introduced, the thing that has endeared you to me all these years is that you're one of us. You're not way up here, you're down here with us. And I remember you telling the story about how you had taken all of your winter clothes to the cleaners, as we do when it's time to change seasons. And when it was time the next fall to go get them, the cleaners had burned down. Every woman in that room was like, "Let's go shopping with the Senator," because that would be such an interesting reason to have to go shopping. But one of the things I learned about you that I wasn't sure was true was that you did respond to every single email that came to you as the SBOE and then as the Senator. And it is true, and you did do that. And I'm just still totally in awe of that. Appreciate you so very much. Another thing that I really liked about you was you were ready for taking on the opposition. If you weren't going to wear your heels to that filibuster, you'd wear your pink tennis shoes. And we loved that. Thank you for standing up for us and with us all these years. We're going to miss you, but you are gone, and we appreciate you. Please come back to this court at any time. We'd love to have you whenever you'd like to be here. Thank you, Senator.
Well, it's great to have you here, Senator, and I'm glad that we're taking time this morning to give some very well-deserved thank yous. And although this is a permanent record of the county with this video and also this proclamation, I mean, it's very small in comparison to the impact that you've made on not only our county government, but our county overall and the quality of life for the almost million residents that call Denton County home now. You know, when I think about Senator Nelson, I'm proud to call her, I would call her a personal friend and mentor. But when I think about her public service, I think of the fact that she listened, she worked hard, and she got results. And those are, I think those are three qualities that everyone in public office should copy and serve as a model. And I really tried to emulate those same things in my public career for these last 16 years. She was so effective, and we knew that if you were to get ahold of Senator Nelson or her wonderful team, she's had a great staff, and I think we need to, you know, kudos to the Nelson team for all these years, to all these years. I mean, she's been able to attract and retain and train wonderful staff, but the Senator really was not only a member of the Senate, she was a leader among the Senate, and not just a member, but truly a leader and a statewide leader. And so I thank you. Commissioner Williams mentioned your family, and we couldn't do this today without talking about Mike and the kids and the grandkids and the sacrifice that Mike has made for the state of Texas and the kids and the grandkids, sharing you with all of us and all of us across the state of Texas. It is noticed and appreciated, so kids, if you're watching, or Mike, I've told him that over the years, you probably heard me say that. Mike, thank you for what you do. I always say that the spouses and families are not elected or appointed, but they serve as well. And so, and the kids being raised in the public eye, that always has its special challenges as a parent, we all know that, and I appreciate the whole Nelson family. The Senator and I have known each other for all these many years, but our relationship was really forged in a more deep and solid way for the last few years during COVID.
Every day.
You mentioned it, every day, every day. You mentioned it the other night at the volunteer dinner, and you were kind of going down memory lane there. And I will tell you, as a Texas County Judge, I had a great responsibility, as the court did, as the county did, and our health department, as we addressed the medical response and the economic response and everything that the court sent our hand to. But I had an ace and a hole with Senator Nelson on our team. And all those meetings, and Matt and Jody and Dawn will remember when you were like, "Okay, let me hang up, I'm going to call the Senator, and let me," you know, all the different details and all, you know, we're trying to get the juice, as we call the vaccine, we're trying to get the juice, and the distribution straightened out and the visibility, so we could see how many vaccines we were getting in the days and weeks to come, so we could plan the clinics. And it'd be another daily call to the Senator, you know, and as busy as she was, she'd take my call and say, "Andy, I'm in with the governor, I'll call you right back." Or text me that. "I'm in with the governor, or I'm on the phone with the Lieutenant Governor, I'll call you right back." Lots and lots and lots of. She didn't answer the call, she was usually on the phone or in a meeting with one of them, and she would say, "Let me get right back to you." And she did. And she did, in a timely manner, lots of early morning, midday, late night calls, and I just knew that I had the state of Texas on our side as a partner, because Senator Nelson was down there fighting for us. And that was a great relief to me. As we went through this, I thought if I needed anything, you'd be there covering us and making introductory calls or following up on the details. So I just want to, I just wanted, that's a personal thank you, especially the last few years. And legislatively, you know, Ron mentioned some of the legislative acts that you did, and we could have written a encyclopedia, you know, we try to make these one pages. But I would like to mention, just for the record, that Senator Nelson passed 32 local bills related to Denton County over her career, specific for Denton County. 32 bills specific for Denton County, and many of those were expanding our judiciary. We believe as a court that, you know, access to the judicial system in a timely manner, you know, access delayed is access denied, and the court has worked over the years to respond to our growing court system in a timely manner, and Senator Nelson was always there, working with the omnibus bill, the judicial bill, and so, and being responsive to that. So for those who use the court system, which is a clear county function and that of the state of Texas, I just wanted to say thank you for all those court users. But we wish you all the best, and Ron, you said the bad word, you said the R-word, and she's not retiring.
That's right.
She's not running for reelection in the Senate. But I know that God has great things in store for her, and we don't know what those are, but I know that she's a talented individual and does not need to retire anytime soon. So we're very blessed and fortunate to have Senator Nelson represent Denton County for the last 30 years. So with that, I'll hand it to you, good Senator.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. And this is such a truly great honor for me, because this is my home. This is my home county. I'm not a crier either, but today I am.
You are not the first. That's why we have them nearby. This is.
Yeah. It has been a tremendous honor to represent Denton County for the past 30 years in the Texas Senate. I'm not going to cry. And prior to that, on the State Board of Education, and it has been a privilege to work with this Commissioners Court on so many issues. And Judge, you mentioned a big one, and that was working together on handling the COVID crisis. And nobody did it better than Denton County. Nobody in this state, and I don't think anybody in the nation.
I second that motion.
Yeah, well, passed unanimously. We were a great example to the nation on how to do it right. And we're a great example on how to do it right in so many ways. And you enumerated many examples of some of our successes, you know? We did accomplish so much. Transportation, you know, we show how to do it the right way. And, you know, we laid the groundwork for Texas Motor Speedway. You talked about a lot of things, our economic success. I'm so proud of what we've accomplished together, and you're going to continue to do great things. There is no doubt in my mind. So I thank you for that. And I thank each of you, I know some are moving on, but I thank each of you for your work and for what you've done. You're right, I could never have done this without my family. You know, when I started this, I prayed, we all pray, we're prayers. And, you know, sometimes, I mean, people thought, back then especially, I'm going to speak to the crowd out there, you know, there were a lot of naysayers, and they said, "Oh, you're not a lawyer, you can't do this, you weren't in the house first, you can't do this." And I prayed and proved them wrong. But I did say, "Boy, you're going to have to give me a great staff and an understanding husband." And my husband has been right there through all of this, never once did he ever complain. 30 years, and he's been there. And my kids have been great, and oh my goodness, did he give me a great staff through all this.
Dave, we got to mention Dave.
Yes, Dave, yes, he's watching.
Can't do this without saying Dave, yes. Hi, Dave.
And no, I am not the R-word. And I'm going to end this by telling you that it is my understanding that at 9:30 this morning, the governor announced what my next role will be.
Well.
Okay. Secretary of State.
I understand that the governor announced, so I now have permission to say that, may I judge?
Yes, ma'am, by all means.
The governor has appointed, has announced that he is going to appoint me the next Secretary of State. Thank you. I am deeply honored. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I am deeply honored. I have accepted, and the Senate, the Senate still has to confirm. But I am really, really excited, so I'm not retiring. And my phone is blowing up up here. So I guess it's out. And I'm excited.
Announced it here, what a special honor for us.
You know what? I'm so excited. I knew he was going to announce sometime today, but I'm so.
Perfect timing.
Happy to be with my friends when I can make this.
So may I be the first to say Madam Secretary?
Madam Secretary.
You're the first. No, when I woke up this morning, Mike said that, so you're the second.
Okay. I'll let Mike Nelson trump me.
Well, the governor told me I could tell Mike, but he was the only person I was permitted to tell, so you're the second to say. And I'm thrilled to be with friends, to make that. It is, I'm very, very happy. You know, everybody wondered what I was going to do next, and I was hoping for just right, my phone is blowing up. So yes, I am thrilled, but again, thank you, thank you, and I am deeply, deeply honored, and I have been deeply honored to represent Denton County in the Texas Senate.
Well, the gratitude is all ours, so thank you.
Together.
Judge, may I say one more thing?
Yes, Commissioner Mitchell.
Jane, I also want to thank you for Brooke, the training Brooke.
She's good, isn't she?
Yeah, she's a member of the Denton County's delegation. On the third floor here. And she takes care of us, and I know, I saw the training, because of all the meetings you go to, that Brooke went when she was working for you. I see that same training that she's bringing has grown to Denton County.
Well, and I was, on that same topic, I was so blessed by having Lori Walker work with me my first seven and a half years.
You know, the Bush White House had nine of my former staffers. Yeah, I trained them, they know how to spell, they know how to go.
I didn't. I didn't, I didn't steal the Nelson staff. They, they were, had already been doing other things. But, but it was, the Nelson, Team Nelson is a great team.
Yes.
It's a great team. It has a great team leader. And, and I just, I really commend them. And yeah, the county, I personally and the county benefited from Team Nelson. And I want to thank Brooke and Lori Walker. And they've been great. And like I say, Dave was always wonderful, always a phone call away and your whole group was, so.
Yep.
Say, now that you're Madam Secretary, where's our law enforcement guys? You need to be escorted out in a motorcade.
I don't need a motorcade, but yeah, security needs to beef up, I gotta tell you.
Oh, yeah, that's exactly right. Congratulations.
Thank you. I am thrilled. I am thrilled. God is good.
He is, all the time.
Yeah.
Well, we may amend this proclamation to congratulate the Senator on being our next Secretary of State. We will amend this accordingly. So, so. All right, all right. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I don't know. This is so exciting.
I heard on WBAP, they said, you know, John Scott.
I make up like down to here. This is so cool. This is so cool.
God bless you, baby.
Oh, God has blessed me so many times. Me too. And I'm so, I didn't know if he was gonna announce it now or five o'clock tonight or something. He said, I'm gonna announce it today. And I was like, I know, I know, I know, I know. This is so cool.
Oh, congratulations.
Sorry, I disrupted everything. Your words were so sweet.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And congratulations.
I know. I got my lipstick back on for these pictures. Yes, yes, he did. He did. He did. He said that. He said that. He did that.
Madam Secretary.
Yeah, he was so funny. Brooke, is this so cool? Lynn, what do you think? Huh? Lynn, Lynn's over there. She can't hear again.
Okay.
How cool is this? Wait, wait, Mike did that this morning. Not that I'm kidding. I'm kidding. This is so funny.
This is a word.
We're gonna take a ten-minute recess. We're going to take a 10-minute recess.
Y'all are the first ones to know. This is crazy.